Are we all set? Okay, welcome back to the board meeting. And the next title on the agenda is the hearing of visitors. To bring this party that would like to speak tonight. To know that this is the time that you can share your own. We can share your views and interest in education with the school board. Am I talking loud enough? Okay. Move this just a little bit more speaking. We are always interested in hearing what you have to say. And we do ask that you. Sign in, is there a sign in sheet there? Okay, you sign in if you can.
Prior to the start of the meeting. You come to the microphone up front here and you state your name and then you spell your name. Clearly first name and last name so that we have it for our records. Do not reflect adversely on the political or economic views ethnic backgrounds or character or motives. Of any individual and you keep your comments concise. We try to limit your contact time at the microphone to two minutes. And Mr. Reynolds will be the time keeper so if you kind of keep an eye on him he'll let you know when you're getting close to your two minutes you can wrap up your thoughts. And we'll start with the people here in the building. And then we will connect with those people that are online that would also like to share their thoughts. So anybody inside the in inside the room here that would like to address the board? Is there anybody on the list? That can can you look at the list please? Okay, is there anybody in the room that would like to stand up and address the board? Okay, is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the board? In the zoom audience? Oh, no, there either, okay. All right, well. Then we will move on, thank you. All right, so we're going on to report. And the first report tonight is a zoom report from Deanna on curriculum and instruction.
Hi, everybody, can you hear me? Well, I don't know if I have a lot more to report because we had that meeting about a week and a half before we went for break, but we are continuing to work on our curriculum adoptions. We can science is going to be piloting six twelve some 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 materials and. Our social studies group is currently working on some standards alignment before we consider adopting any materials. It's been kind of a it's been a great year, we've had some quite a few volunteers of parents. Even grandparents who've been interested in being on some of our committees, so that's been really nice because sometimes it's sometimes hard to find people. That would be willing to sit on those committees, so. Other than that, I was able to enjoy some Christmas performances as well as the King Review sing along. And I think there was a lot of the schools really tried to do some fun stuff in a safe way before we went to break, so. That's all for me.
All right, I just heard from Greg Reynolds.
Wow. I want to talk just for a little bit about the financial reports, man. Can you turn that down? We can switch. Want to switch? So in my November financials, just a couple of comments. First of all, if you look at the graph, the page after the graph. That. Says general fund budget stays for the twenty one twenty two school year. I want to talk a little bit about the proportionate percentage that's towards the top. And just point out to the board that what a portion of means is is that the state pays us. The basic education money on any state program dollars. Based on these percentages, so September, we received nine percent of that total. For October, we received eight percent. And then in November, we received five percent. So that's twenty two percent based upon what our budget was and the allocations on the state programs. And the reason that these percentages aren't equal, a lot of this deals with a few years ago. The state had a budget crisis and they changed. The state's the state's budget was July to June. And so you notice in July and August was the two highest proportionate percentages. Some of that is because the state needed to push money to the next fiscal year. And also October. I mean, excuse me, November and May are the lowest months. And that's because we received some level equalization. Which is called in the blue there the levy assistance. And also our property taxes are higher in October and November, so that's the purpose for for those lower percentages. And as a as a total, you can see on the graph, the page before that. That we do approximately receive twenty two percent. We have this year and then twenty two percent the previous year and twenty one percent in the nineteen twenty year. The state's still approving and the federal government is still approving. A grants as we go, we're not totally. Up to date on the grants, I do want to point out that. We received just a couple of days ago a two hundred thousand dollar. Federal emergency connectivity grant. That will be purchasing some laptops and some other computer technor technology with. I know I'm kind of jumping around, but there is also just since I'm talking about the connectivity grant, there is a payment in our accounts payable. A hundred and ninety two thousand, hundred ninety six thousand dollars that. Is our first emergency technology grant that we received, so. There are still some laptops are waiting to be shipped to us on that grant, but we have six hundred Chromebooks that. That we have a technology now, so that's good news as far as as far as the technology grants concerned. As far as the financials again, just briefly, we're. You know nineteen twenty was the first year. As you remember, the COVID happened later in the year, so it's a pretty comparable year. I'm looking at, you know, twenty twenty one was was an unusual year with. With no students, but. As far as the fund balance kind of going up and down, it's the pattern is is pretty similar to to the nineteen twenty school year, so. But we'll I'll keep watching this as we go. I did also want to point out, maybe some of you. If you look in the what says revenues under two thousand, there's a line item called E-rate. I just want to, if you're not familiar with what E-rate is, but look at your cell phone bills, there's a charge in there. It's a Federal Communication Commission. Billion dollar program that is meant to help schools and libraries. Not pay for technology, mostly internet connections. And some switches and those kind of things. And so. Our E-rate, it's a. Contract that that are big for our internet services and technology. And not every year is the same, I think this year's lower than than the previous year, so. You'll see that the E-rate revenue amount is is also budgeted to be lower. So that's the the quick on the November financial report. Any questions on that before I move on to enrollment?
Quick question. I knew you did this at the last meeting. Yes. Incumbrances, what was the definition?
Incumbrances, there's there's two different types.
Okay.
There's payroll encumbrances, which is so, for example, the teacher has a contract. And we put it in the system. Say it's sixty thousand dollars and they're going to be paid five thousand dollars a month for twelve months. And incumbences is what's left to be paid. So for payroll encumbrances, they put it, we put in the contract for sixty, then. You know, for after November, there would be nine months left of that, and there's also benefits that would be attached to that. The other way that we have incumbences are through purchase orders. So those are purchasers that have been processed, sent to the vendors. That and the process is we send a purchaser, they ship us the information, we get the invoice. Our accounts payable, a lady Lori would then pay that invoice and remove that incumbents. So those are outstanding purchase orders that have not been fulfilled yet.
Thank you.
Welcome. Uh huh.
The fund balance decreased. One point six million dollars approximately, is that less from twenty nineteen twenty school year?
The one point six is is the budget. Now, is there a specific page you're looking at like?
So I'm looking so short, page seven out of one twenty four on the agenda. It's the fund balance decrease, the third from the bottom, there's from the bottom line item.
And this is the budget status for twenty twenty one, correct?
Twenty one twenty twenty general fund budget status.
So. If you look at November, for example, our fund balance went down. Eight hundred ninety eight thousand dollars for that month.
Correct.
And year to date, if you go way over to the column that says. Total year to date or the average at the top, a million sixty five, that's what it has been since September. So if you take the. Eight hundred seventy one thousand drop in September and seven hundred three thousand dollar positive. In October and the eight hundred ninety eight thousand dollar decrease in November, those three months added together are a decrease of a million sixty five.
Is that a decrease from what? Year year?
Year to date, just for this year. So starting in September, so our our expenses. For those three months combined is the ten million and fifty seven thousand. And our revenue for those three months combined is eight million nine ninety one. Now, the column next to that, a million six fifty three, that's what the budget is. So the budget is that we our fund balance would decrease a million six fifty three for the year.
So we have that much less to spend?
Yes.
Okay.
So on the enrollment report. This is through the month of December. And I just want to touch briefly on this, the first page that says enrollment. Student enrollment and withdrawals and just I want to talk briefly just about the virtual learning piece. Those twenty four students. Are actually in our account that we submit to OSPI. But those students are really a pass through. We have like the we'll see some payments to Graduation Alliance, there's also a contract with ESD one twenty three. To service those virtual learners. And it's like I said, it's a pass through, we count those students on our enrollment count, OSPI. OSPI pays us that money, but we get to keep a little bit of a overhead charge, seven percent. Just for processing things, but the ninety three percent. Go to those vendors, so I guess in my mind. I don't want to inflate our enrollment because it's really a pass through, so if you look at the the graph. Where it has the. Our budget of twenty three fifty six and the year to date average through December, so September, October, November, December is twenty three eighty one. And that leaves us with the excess over the budget of twenty five students. Twenty five does not include those twenty four, that's actual students that in essence we we are paid free and clear of, so. Just wanted to point that out that if if you ever looked at the portion of report which is online to the OSPI website. And you said, well, heck, our enrollment, you know, is more than twenty three eighty one, it's because of those twenty four students that. Just for our purposes, my purposes, I don't want to give a false security, like, oh, man, we got, you know, forty nine more students in our budget, it's. It's really just the twenty five. And this is the other point too, is you'll start to see the drop, which is our history. In that from September through June, there's a there's a typical decline. And you can see the previous years, but but that bottom green line is is our twenty one twenty two. And it's pretty stable, it's not so bad, you know, but twenty three ninety five down to twenty three seventy one in in December, so. But the top pages is the reason for. You know, we brought in fourteen, but there were twenty five students. That withdrew sixteen of those moved out of the, excuse me, moved out of the district. So that's the and then you can look at the the various grade spans. Elementary is down ten of the budget, middle school is up seven, high school is up twenty eight, so. Thankful to the high school for maintaining their enrollment so far.
Do you think? Part of the withdrawal in December are families that have already taken off to. Oh, I know historically in December, we have a lot of families that travel to.
Yeah. And do those usually then come back like in early January?
Some do.
I know some of them.
Stay a little bit longer. But overall, we still continue to decline in the spring and and in the summer too. The only, the last thing I want to just mention, and and I can save more of my comments when we talk about the vouchers and the payroll. I did revise this, the payroll sheet.
We can.
So we can talk about it then, but I just wanted to. Be able to have some time to to discuss what those changes were to that.
I just wanted to kind of point out that historically that we do see a drop in December because families pull out and travel.
I have a question. Is our district currently open outside of district boundaries for kids to come in?
We are, yes.
That was. That was in the. That was in the mission. And looking in my first year. Cause I was employed here. Action with the McCray decision was is that we would receive less. So there were winners and losers, they as far as districts. Districts who received way more districts who received less, and so we were one of those, and so that's what. That was a move that we made, there was policy around it. So we opened up our boundaries in hopes of getting people for for whatever reason. Whether, you know, they were attracted to winning athletic programs. Whether they thought, you know, they wanted to be a part of it, being a brand new high school. So, yeah, we did open up those boundaries and we have seen some students, you know, choice into Prosser.
So my next question, just looking at this, the district graph from. You know, twenty fourteen to today. You know, we see a pretty significant trend downward and we could probably keep following that for the next couple of years. What what are we doing to figure out the drop, like the reasons behind it, you know, and? The potential remedies or policy decisions that. Could create, you know, maybe a better environment to bring kids in or or whatever that may be.
Yeah, so we investigated it, and there are some different, there were some different things going on, so at the high school level. We were pushing students into running start, and so the money follows the kid. So if they're enrolled in running start, they aren't enrolled in Prosser High. Another one was that students were enrolling and they'd already accrued the number of credits that they need in order to graduate, so. They were only taking one, one class or a couple of classes at Prosser High School, so that impacted the FTE. Largely, you know. Prosser, Prosser hasn't been a community that has grown as far as new and more housing. We're hoping that the construction projects taking place now will bring in new families and increase enrollment. But other than trying to advertise, I think, in other districts. Our our population has been, you know, over the years somewhat, you know, stagnant to declining. And that's kind of just the way it is without, I I think, without new homes, without a community that's continuing to grow.
We'll go back and look. We'll go back and look at some of the past records, the oh eight oh nine year was our high watermark. And they went down from there and they've been steadily since then.
So do we reach out to families when they when they leave, they're moving? Or they're, you know, have a few credits left, because we have a big decline in elementary students too, or you take your children out of district. You have a significant number of foster families going out of district. So what are we doing to reach out to them to get feedback and to see what can be done?
So we we have looked at where students are tracing out to. There are service providers out there that just can offer some different things that we necessarily can't. So for instance, Sunnyside Christian. Could provide different values and different perspectives in their child education, Patterson. Has kind of a cap and so they can offer smaller class sizes than what we can. So, you know, we we know, we know why some of them are doing it. And our parents will say, you just can't offer this, and so I'm picking my child elsewhere. So, yeah, we we haven't necessarily said. The system, you know. The system being as large as it is, if you stay, then we'll do X to. To keep you enrolled in Prosser, so we haven't necessarily done that, but we have, we have inquired about where are you going and why? And, you know, of course, like I said, the answers vary on that.
I just want to offer also that. For years, Prosser actively. Had campaigned to close the borders and. And we set ourselves up in a position where we did not actively. Try to welcome people back into our community. And. That really hurt us, and now when we are trying to reverse all of that. We have a lot of work to do, we have a lot of work to do to say to people, no, we really want you here, we are a great place, we are a great place to create children. We have fantastic teachers, we have fantastic administrators, we've got wonderful buildings that we're setting up, but. For a lot of years, the philosophy under our prior administrator was, we don't want you, you're not, if you don't live here in Prosser, we don't want your kids to. And so we have a lot of work to change that philosophy and. You know, and this is where, you know, we want people to come back to Prosser and we want people to educate their children, want them to come back here and say, this is where we want our children. To to get that super education, so we do have a lot of work ahead of us. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of reasons why people should want their children to be educated in Prosser, we just have to turn that whole mindset around. Because there's a lot of damage done when we close the borders before. We have a lot of work.
I guess for specific actions that the board would like to see happen. In exiting, if a student or a parent chooses to exit their child. We'd I'd be open to take recommendations from the board and work on a system to. Kind of deploy that.
I think that's a good idea, so I think we should have some sort of form that goes out, a survey. And then we need to see that data on a quarterly basis, if not more, and see what needs to be done, but I think that's critical information.
Think along with, you know, that type of information, being able to gather that, that that would help, I think, direct. Our goals and priorities as a board moving forward, you know, that maybe we need to shift or or do something different, so.
And change that.
Yeah, the choice outputs have to be approved. And so, I mean, there's. We've even gotten into discussions about. Districts are entitled to every kid who lives within their boundary, so in order to get into another district, superintendents have to approve it. So we can attach a survey form to that. You know, when times were tough, we were looking at those numbers and saying, you know, ma- maybe we do like. Close our borders and say you have to attend Prosser High School, but it gets to a point where, you know, the board is going to take heat on decision, a decision like that. And unless we're in dire straits financially, then it almost isn't worth it politically to make a move like that. Because people, I I think there are certain people that do want choice. Or, you know, do you want to send their kids maybe to a different district, whether it's Patterson, Bickleton, wherever it may be for for a different reason.
Yeah, and I'm not saying we need to limit where parents, you know, have a choice to send their their kids, but it'd be helpful. For me, I'm sure it'd be helpful for everybody on the board, plus the administrative, you know, administrators to know. We're leaving for X, Y, and Z, do we need to do something different policy wise or or whatever? That may, you know, sway them to say, well, yeah, this is what we want, we want to stay here.
To make it feel more appealing to stay on.
Exactly.
Was that it for you, your report, so take great. Okay. We've all had a chance to look at the director reports. We, unless there is a specific question on the directory report. We're just gonna. Ask the board members, is there anything you would like to talk about on any of the directory reports? Otherwise, we're we're gonna just go through them quickly.
I do, but if we're gonna go and go through by each report, then I've only got a few questions.
Okay, so. Rather than have each of the directors come up, I'm just gonna call them, and then if there's if there's a question on them, we can ask it, otherwise we'll just move forward, okay? So the first one is the Athletic and Activities Report from Kevin Moss, are there any questions on that one?
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, keep hearing updated WIA rules, if you could brief us on those, please. May spur an additional question.
The new guideline from Department of Health and WIA regarding testing is increased. The new guideline from Department of Health and WIA regarding testing is, uh, increase the testing to three times a week. Uh, regardless of vaccination status, and that would be for coaches and players. So we've, uh, we got that, uh, Friday morning. Part of the break, we've met as athletic directors in our league. Uh, most everybody is gearing up to continue testing throughout this downtime when kids have activities. And then at the start of January, we'll be scheduling most likely Monday, Wednesday, Friday on a continuous basis to do those tests for our kids.
So is it, so basically we'll have to test every kid Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Regardless of a competition or, or.
Right, you can, you can be twenty-four hours ahead of a competition, Monday, Wednesday, Friday kind of helps us meet that. So, um, if we have a game on Saturday, we test Friday, that would hold over, we'd be fine. If we work for our wrestlers who are doing tournaments. Um, if we ha- happen to have a game on Tuesday, we test on Monday. So we think we can hit everybody pretty well with that plan. And that's generally what, uh, majority of the league is planning on doing as well.
So, uh, sorry, just to be clear, if we are competing, if there is a one competition, say it's on a Saturday, we're still testing Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Three times a week. Yeah. Uh, we did, uh, Mrs. Bestbier and I have had ongoing conversations. We just brought, I think forty boxes of tests in today. Uh, in, so there's plenty. Our, our concern was making sure that we had enough stockpiled. We did have some that would have got us through January. I think we're good now to, through February for sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions?
Oh, I had a quick question. How, how do you handle this? Is there a sheet and they come in and you check them off? Cause the test is pretty.
It's, um, I, I've said this before, I'm gonna say it again, the, the staff and the nursing staff have really been incredible to help us with that. Uh, in addition though, so have our coaching staffs. Because in order to do that at this rate, three times a week now, uh, we have a majority of our coaches from cheer to wrestling to basketball who are helping us. They've all been trained, uh, to do that. Um, so they're helping us facilitate that. And that's a lot of tests. And it's not just doing the test, we have to record it as well on the, um, simple forms state, uh, information so that they're aware. So I read, they, they've really busted their tail and it's gonna be a little more challenge, uh, as we move forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kevin.
Can I add just a quick question for you guys? I did get a request today, um, from AAU. Uh, they put off requesting, uh, use of our facilities for games uh, until the first of the year. So I got a call about twelve thirty today. Um, their requests would be for Saturdays, uh, January through March. So I just kind of want to know, get a feel from you guys that that's something we want to do. We'll gear up the, give you the request and get that rolling.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, um, we, we've had a lot of conversation up and down the valley and, uh, Sunnyside and us and a couple others were hesitant to get involved until the first of the year. So now it looks like a pretty good time to do that. So we'll do that.
Is this all subject to, um, any guidelines that the, uh, health department may issue due to the how, how, uh, COVID is reacting?
Yeah, and, and we're all at, you know, at the end of that, uh, tail wagging at that, what we have to do with that. But, um, community groups like AAU have requirements as well. Um, it, it's simply they stay masked, they try to stay masked. That's the goal because they're not doing any testing program. So they would participate, but they would be masked.
Do they have to do social distance?
Same, same as our expectations in, in the, and it's just hard because we're not this person right here. I'm not in there policing that, but they, we do have good cooperation and, and they're realized that they're, they're subject to the same guidelines.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, career and technical education department, were there any questions from the board on that? Okay, so that would be Rick, is, is he available? Okay. Mr. Pollitt, are you available for some questions?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. Hi, Rick. Okay, uh, what are the questions from the board?
Um, I just have one, Rick is, do we have a, I know you're part of the CTE, do we have like a media or, journalism type program at this point?
Uh, currently we don't, but that is something Brian and I are talking about in the future. And it'll probably, it, it just kind of depends. We would have to have a teacher that's qualified for it. And it would probably run through the English department.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
But it, it would, it would, even though it's through the English department, it could still be a CTE class. If the per, if the person has the correct industry experience.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you. Happy holiday, Rick.
Thank you. Happy holiday to everyone.
Okay. Uh, child nutrition report. Any questions from the board? Okay, if you'd like to come up darling.
Oh, and I may not even, you don't even answer that. So we talk about this, we talk about the form more than the meal application and how I'm, I even had it like way over here. I apologize. We talk about the other financial benefits to the district. So what does the district do to get that to every parent and then follow up to get that form? It seems like that would really be advantageous.
We mail the forms out to the parents every year. And if we don't hear back from them, then we get on the phone and start calling the parents so they can get the forms turned into us. And usually we get, um, good results from that.
You have like an idea percentage of how many forms have been turned in?
Uh, right now, we probably have about twenty-five forms out at Heights and at the middle school and at KRB that still need to be turned in. We probably have ten at Woodstrand and at the high school, we probably have about forty.
Out of the whole district?
Yes.
That's great.
Yeah, the ladies work really hard on getting those forms in. Okay, thank you.
That is getting us on the road to every child gets free meals every day, even when the government, that, that is amazing. Yes. Thank you, darling. Okay.
I, I have one.
Oh, you have another, okay.
Yeah.
Darling, you're not a.
Yeah, sorry. Um, I, looking at the, I don't know, can you find the name, but the deal that you do at Bethel? Uh, the.
Second Harvest.
Second Harvest, thank you. Um, what is the school's contribution to that program? Like, how do we participate?
How do I participate? Getting volunteers and started back when COVID first happened. And we were actually putting our mills out in the bus loading zone and parents would come by and pick them up. And Second Harvest contacted us and asked if they could partner with us to provide mill boxes to parents as they came through. So ever since then, I've been one that has been like the go, or the, what do you call it?
The agent?
Yes, for it. And then when they took away our bus loading zone at KRB, we went to the belt of church and there's so much more room out there for us to do it. I usually go out there every time they're here and volunteer plus we get volunteers from our school district.
Well, I just think it's a great program, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, migrant and bilingual education report. Do you have any questions? I know that he had an additional comment he wanted to, to bring forward.
So, Eric, um, if you're out there. If you can talk a little bit about, um, the, the desire to work with your, um, PAC board and take them to um, a professional development experience, a learning experience for them to the National Migrant Conference.
Yeah, no problem. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, fantastic. So, um, in the past, Prosser has participated in the National Migrant Conference. However, due to COVID and some other budgetary constraints, we've, um, had to miss out on a few different opportunities to participate. Um, however, this year we are back in person. Um, it is going to be held in San Antonio, Texas. But one of the biggest benefits that happens from the national conference is that not only do the staff get professional development, but it also is an opportunity for our, um, parent advisory committee officers to participate in understanding their role and how they can assist our students in the migrant program. Uh, I have, now this is, um, particular funds that re- relate only to the migrant program. So I have budgeted accordingly to include all of our PAC officers, all of our staff, in addition to, to board members as well. I feel it is, um, really important that the board kind of works hand in hand with the PAC officers in regards to the PAC officer agenda and what the migrant program has to offer to our students. And so some of the things that, uh, are covered in our national conference even relate to our earlier topics about, uh, T, uh, people being um, kind of transitioned out of our district, um, what we can do to retain and recruit additional um, people to our district, how we can move forward with understanding parliament procedure in addition to what is best for programming in regards to the overall state goals of English, math, parent involvement, preschool and out of school youth. So there's quite a bit of information that's provided at the national conference and we're hoping that the board will allow us to move forward and, and take advantage of the opportunity to not only educate ourselves, but to bring back more information that helps better serve our community.
Okay. When this is conference again, um, excuse me, Eric, when is the conference?
It actually doesn't start until the last half of our spring break. So it's April sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth and tenth, I believe. I believe the flyer was added a little bit later into your board packet.
Okay, and the way that it, it looks like it's would be totally funded by your, the, the program itself or the bilingual and migrant programs, is that correct?
Uh, it will, it would be completely funded by categorical money for the migrant program, correct? Not the bilingual. This is a migrant, um, program opportunity. Other districts surrounding us also participate as well.
Okay, is this something that then can be brought back to a future or a future board meeting for us to, um, to review and take action on?
Uh, yes, I am asking.
Approve out of state travel and it would give us more time to, to consider the, the expenses and, and, uh, and, and, and really take a good look at it.
Correct. And if, uh, if you need additional information, please don't hesitate to contact me. We are asking, um, the board to hopefully, um, provide us a direction by the next board meeting so we can take advantage of an early bird special that allows us to reduce our cost overall, um, for participating. Um, but I do understand that the board, you know, for whatever may have additional questions, please don't hesitate, contact my office or my department. And we're more than willing to sit down in a special setting to answer any additional questions that may come up or additional concerns. But again, I just want to reiterate that the overall purpose of us attending something like this is to provide the professional development for the staff and the PAC officers who participate in the overall programming for the migrant program. Um, and this is not something that we try to do every year, but you know, every other year would be great. Um, as our, every two years, we have new officers coming in to our PAC officer setting and providing that direction for us.
Well, I, I do appreciate the, um, the importance of attending uh, these types of professional developments, but I do know that, also know that we have kind of put a moratorium on out of district travel, uh, national travel for, uh, for a while now. And so we need to kind of go back and, and take all of those things into consideration. But, uh, I am a supporter of good, solid, um, uh, staff development, not, that not only develops the, your staff, but also develops your parent leaders. And so I'd be willing to, to delve into this a little farther, not just say, nope, can't do it, but let's, let's take a, take a, some time and really look into this and, and see if it's something that is, uh, that maybe is doable. So, um.
Well, I thank you so much for your time and consideration. And like I said, this is, uh, one hundred percent categorical money. It does not relate to the overall general budget. This is, these are funds specifically set aside for this program and its overall implementation in the Prosser School District.
Right. But again, it's looking at what's best. Uh, we look at what's best overall for the district too. So, uh, yeah, we'll bring it back and, and take a, a further look at it. So. All right, thank you.
Eric, I have a question. Are the sessions available to view online that are available on their website?
Um, I do not have that answer, but I can, um, provide some more information at a, I can email it directly to you. It would just, uh, require us to kind of gather some more information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Eric? All right. Thanks, Eric. Let's move on to the nurses' report. Any questions? On the nurses' report? All right, thank you. Okay, nurses' report then.
Um, what are the protocols that we have for close contact, uh, kids within the district, kids and staff?
So I don't know, I was on, right now. I have the guidance from Department of Health District, um, which is if, I think it's under six feet uh, for fifteen minutes or more, um, is considered a close contact. And so it, when we get, we get confirmation of a case, we have to go back and look where the kid was seated within the classroom and who is interacting with, um, for that, for those periods of time.
Yeah. So in addition to that, so if like, if a, you know, staff or student became a close, a contact trace individual, what is their, um, quarantine schedule? Is it the same as if you have tested positive or is it a shorter amount of days?
Yeah, they actually have to test the end and you can, the end has been working with, yeah.
So if a student is a close contact, they can test on their seventh day. And if they're negative, they can come back on the eighth day. Um, if they choose not to test, they have to come back after the tenth day. So on the eleventh day. If they, and of course, if they get sick anytime in between, then they would follow the regular protocols. But there, if they are not vaccinated, then it's there, they have that, um, quarantine time. If they're vaccinated, they can stay at school.
If they're in close contact, correct? Without testing.
Yeah, the kids that are vaccinated, unless it's changed recently, but that was the rule, that, that was the rule from, before breaks and for the whole, really the whole time we've been back at school.
So I'll just, the follow-up question, um, just to move things along. On the last page of the report is total positive and total close contact. Um, it looks like we have about two hundred and twenty-nine kids total, if I'm reading that correctly, that have either been, have tested positive or been in close contact. So I'm assuming most of them went to, went into quarantine. I would assume, I, I, I don't, I'm not sure. Um, is there a way to quantify the effects of keeping that many kids out for ten to fourteen days? Is there a way to quantify the effects of keeping that many kids out for ten to fourteen days?
Well, uh, the easiest way would really to be quantified by individual, either like to look at it by individual student. So, you know, we offer homework, we offer tutoring for kids after, you know, for the, they could go online with teachers after school. A lot of teachers are doing that on their own, but we have teachers hired specifically for that. Um, they are notified when a student goes out and then they contact them to come into their team's meetings so they can support them. But it would obviously be around the um the academic performance and you'd have to look at each kid to see if they're I mean, it's really tough to to compare that at this point after they were out of school for basically a year and a half kind of, and then back in school. So um, I would say maybe if it affected their academic performance, I, most kids, it's pretty hard for it not to affect them somehow, uh missing class is um sometimes hard to make up, no matter how you do it. So, uh, I mean, we certainly can't say there aren't effects. We, we know that there are. Uh, kid, parents that request homework, kids that do their, that do their work and, you know, email or check in with teachers or attend the tutoring. Of course, we're doing, probably doing better than kids that don't, but we know there's kids that don't too. So, yeah, there's negative effects for sure.
There's multiple variables in there. So um was a kid, was a child or a student, did they actually have COVID or were they close contact? Um, the number of days that they're out and then uh grade by grade in content areas. And so as Deanna was saying, part of that variable is home environment as well. Was the child um pushed to do homework while they were out, or did the parents say um, you know, just, just heal up or I'm gonna leave to work and it's okay if you watch TV or get on the computer. So that would be a variable in it too. And then the tutoring as well would be available. Did they take advantage of a tutoring program after? But it would, we'd have to, you know, there, there are two distinctions there, whether they had it and didn't. And then what are all the content areas? Some of the content areas would probably be hidden. Um, so for instance, like PE. Um, you know, if I'm a close contact and I never had COVID, um, you know, my PE grade is probably fine. Whereas my math or ELA, you know, class I may be struggling in because you know, I missed reading instruction for that period of time or, you know, I was enrolled in calculus or algebra, you know, and that week or so that I was out, I struggled to make that up and I didn't have tutoring. So, um, yeah, so there are variables. It's difficult to quantify, I think, to to come up with. Um, we can try and poll, poll names and look at um, look at students at different grade levels um and how their acad- academic performance is. Our teachers are pretty good. I think with um knowing when the student's behind, um, that intervention usually takes place first within the classroom with the teacher. Though the teacher knowing that a student was out for, say, a week or ten days or whatever, they would be the first one to say, hey, you have to get this, it's critical that you hit the standard. Probably clear as mine.
Yeah, um, you know, I just struggle a little bit with the, the kids that get contact traced out. Um, well, in general, I think I I struggle a little bit with all of it, but uh, you know, if we're you know, we're all kids, at one point in time, you know, doing homework is is a challenge and now we force them to go home and we don't have a viable, technically a viable opportunity to get the kids the education that, that, that they deserve. So I guess that's where I struggle with this a little bit. And how, you know, we had a year and some change of homeschooling, basically and online, but you know, it was a struggle and it was difficult for everybody. And we're kind of doing the same thing in in micro, little micro climates with the kids today. And they're, and and so it's it I'm not an educator, I don't have all the answers, but there's got to be a better way to get these kids educated. If we force them out of school to get them the instruction that they need at the time they need it, considering like math or science or something like that. Where it, it would take daily instruction to understand how to do a math problem or understand chemistry and stuff like that.
And this will be like a later discussion too. Um, the big benchmarks that students need to hit are reading grade level by third grade and then um algebra at the ninth grade level. So a system, a system has like, say, Prosser School District, they have thirteen years, uh, K to twelve educated child, where that makes the biggest difference and it's the highest stakes is um Brian Bailey's work at the high school level, because that's, you know, you have four to graduate them and those credits all count. The kid's not gonna get promoted on. They, they have to create a credit to result. So that's where a system like ours doesn't have time to intervene. I would agree with you, i- in, in this really speaks to the, the ability of a teacher, the very best instruction the kid can receive is in person from a teacher. You know, the, the viability of that of distance learning, it's difficult. You know, some people, some teachers send home packets. Some teachers say, read, read these pages in the book, um, but they don't get that feedback in time that they would. So, yeah, it's, it's difficult, but you know, Brian's been working with his teachers around data and testing and things like that to try and identify students to intervene.
Oh, I know it's not the same, but we, the tutor that we have for the high school kids um is a relatively recent college graduate who was an exceptional student AP to call the most challenging classes in high school. Sometimes, you know, if we had that teacher, like um they an experienced English teacher that had applied to do the tutoring. Um, I'm sure they would do the, the a great job and the best they could. They might be fantastic math and science students, but um, it's hard to get someone who can actually probably do everything that these kids need to do. And we are really lucky. It's Cameron Holt. Um, we're really lucky that she was um interested and willing to tutor the high school kids because it was gonna, I knew, I thought it was gonna, I was worried about finding someone who would be able to do it. So it's not class, um, but it's probably about the best situation we could have had as far as the tutor goes. So if you know Cameron, you can tell her I said so.
All right, moving on to uh security division report. Or, okay, so if you'd like to come up then? Are you tonight? Good, okay.
My question was just primarily regarding the um under your report for the threat assessment regarding the assessment for the high school, the new high school. When is that scheduled to happen?
I have not scheduled, I'm awaiting approval from the district.
And then are you working with the security camera issue?
I'm not included per se in the technical technology portion of it. All I'm doing is I'm providing them my firsthand experience, what I'm experiencing with cameras, which is not very good.
And then is that an issue um for the administrator is with the contractors, there's a subcontractor that put in the cameras? Are they working to repair those issues or and what's the update on that?
Peggy, this is Sean. I am happy to to shed some light on that if you'd like.
Great. Go ahead, Sean.
So we've struggled with our cameras since they all came online. In fact, roughly twenty-five percent of them have never functioned uh like they should. We've struggled from a network standpoint, so much so that we have now pushed it back on the contractor. The, the base of this story is Charvanel is the contractor to the high school. Charvanel subbed out those cameras or the bulk of the electrical components to Inner West. Inner West subbed out to a subcontractor and that subcontractor subbed out. So we're like five contractors deep in setting up those cameras. And we have now got all five of those players back in the same room uh to discuss the original design. And that's where it sets right now. Uh, the Conley Engineering is who originally designed I, the high school and the elementary schools. Uh, so as of last Friday, they've gotten re-involved to see where the breakdown happened. We know the breakdown's not in our network. And we know the breakdown is not necessarily centered around a camera. We think it's centered around how those servers or the uh application that runs those cameras was set. And that's, that's where we set, is they're currently figuring those pieces out for us.
That makes sense. Sean, do you know who the, the fifth contractor was, the fifth sub?
I do. Uh, it went Charvanel, Inner West, Compunit, Fisher Systems and Conley uh Engineering is who designed the system for us. We have the same system uh that a couple of school districts in our valley have. And they're using it flawlessly. So it makes me feel a little bit better when I talk to those other school districts that it's it's not our equipment, it's somewhere in the setup. And right now, we're just working really hard right now to pin down where that ended up.
Thank you. What do you think the biggest challenge of security that he's pulling?
Space.
Too much or?
It's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand square feet and I've gotta do it by myself with no cameras.
What, what do you need to do? What do you need for help?
I need more eyes, ears, feet, hands.
One point about doing a one more uh security badges for the high school. My question would be, uh, does Benton County, do they, Sheriff's Department, do they still offer help doing threat assessment?
Yes, they do.
Would they be willing to help us again?
Yes, the, in, so the threat assessment that they, they would provide would be for a physical security assessment of poss- potential threats. The school district or the, the service district, EST one twenty-three is also available for a threat assessment, and that's more geared towards threat assessments towards students. Um, and then OSBI does a threat assessment as well, but that's more geared towards administrative policy. So you've got three different types of threat assessments to go with.
Would they do that at the same time?
At, at this, at this point, I'm more um I'm, I'm leaning more towards the, the physical security threats that the school has. So.
So be uh, heavy Benton County.
Benton County and Prosser PD coming in, yes.
That's a, that's a great way to do it. I, I actually had Benton County and Yakima County come down at the same time and do a threat assessment for me at Patterson and it was great.
Let's just say, yeah, please set that up or.
Forgot to turn on this thing. To, so that due to pull out was to schedule ongoing work sessions. And so um part of those may be informational, part of those may be uh around specific topics around safety and security. So we did have those scheduled regularly. Um, one of the other thoughts was um in talking with different board members has been to uh divide up into committee. And so different board members would oversee different committees and have meetings and then they would bring that back to the board and make that recommendation to the board as a whole. Um, so there's just different ways that we can do it. Um, the, the foundation of it is scheduling time with, with directors um to help guide, guide that work. Um, so it, it looked like from the poll, and this is probably getting too far into, to the weeds, it looked like from the poll that Wednesdays Wednesdays were good days for everybody. So if we were gonna schedule ongoing meetings, they would be the opposite. So the first, first Wednesday, Wednesday or the third Wednesday of the month. And then our board meetings would be on the second and fourth. Um, so we could cover issues and then, you know, discuss those more in depth or approve them at a board.
Yeah, one of the, with uh, one of the things that we try to do is uh prior to our regular board meeting is um I have, I meet with Matt and usually I bring the vice president and we review the agenda and kind of talk about what we'd like to uh, some of the things that we'd, you know, or we'd like to see moving forward. And one of the things that we've talked as, as a board is the whole um, the whole safety re- re- uh moving the, the safety um uh committee forward again. And uh, and then uh, I believe uh Alicia, you had mentioned doing a study session, getting us back into doing a monthly study session. And so um, that's kind of where this whole idea came from, but I think it would be really a positive thing if we could do, um, if we could revive the the um, the safety and security meetings and it could be, it could be a, a whole board study session or it could be, the first meeting could be the, a whole board study session with the, the players from the, you know, the study the safety and security people from the different building, or it could be just a couple of people from the board that are interested being on that committee. I know Andy has expressed a lot of interest in being on that committee and um, I think Jason, you've expressed some interest in being on that committee also. But then coming back and reporting to the full board during that uh study session kind of where we're at, where we need to go.
But going back specifically to the question, it doesn't necessarily need to be a formal, um, formal decision about giving these assessments done. It's something that we can do, y- you know, if the board wants that. You can definitely move forward on that and then bring that report back to the board.
Right.
Uh, in a specific meeting or at a different time, you know, during the next report. Is that something of interest that you know, we want to move, or?
But, yeah. So i- i- it is, I, I, I know when um we were moving to a pretty regular once a month, I believe, a, a safety meeting. And then um we were moving in a lot of directions on, on a lot of different committees and then pull it here and so kind of everything stopped. But I think it's time to start moving back into some of those um to start hitting some of those committees again and um and the safety and security has come up a number of times that I think it's a committee we really need to start. Yeah, investing some time and energy and again.
Where we did for a number of years, in fact, Peggy, you were still in Patterson, uh, when I first got on the board uh was we would do it once a month and then the but it was myself and then for a while it was, it was Scotty Hunt and myself and and then you came around, did he has uh the senior, the senior board member or ranking or however you wanna word it, it was kind of their responsibility to bring a, to bring a report back to the board at the next board meeting. And then we had about a half a dozen parents and then whatever, whatever building or area we were discussing, whether it was a maintenance issue or you know, the high school or the middle school, we would have that administrator and some parents and we would all have a, that's how we, how we did it then, so.
And that was before we got safety.
Well, and that's, we continued that way right up until COVID, so. But yeah, it was, it started before we had, we just had a, a, a Dwayne Clark back then, so.
So.
We definitely need to revamp it or revive it, I guess is what I should say.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Committee is a great idea.
And the other.
I don't guess we still have any of the remaining parent names. I mean, I remember a couple, it's been see if they wanna come back and help. That would
It was a pretty good uh sized committee and it was not just because I was on it for a little.
When it was over, it falls, we had probably a dozen to fifteen. When it was over, it falls, we had probably a dozen to fifteen people once a month show up.
It was E S D one oh five.
Yeah.
Because E S D one twenty-three wasn't really interested in, in the whole safety and security stuff. But one oh five in Yakima was, so they kind of allowed Patterson and Prosser to come in under their wing. And so we jumped at the chance and, uh, that's kind of how Prosser Patterson got, got.
Yeah, I thought we'd had to go to Yakima for the meetings a few times.
Need to post on Facebook for any parents that are interested in the security committee. I think that would be a great way.
Absolutely.
So Jason, would you be interested in working the band and being part of that committee?
Uh, yeah, for sure. Um, I do think you wanna put a number on it to make sure there's not so many people that can't get anything done.
Yeah, it's like herding cats when you get too many.
You know, so we, I think we should come up with an, like a number, whether it's eight or.
Where we had, if I remember correctly, I think we had about a half a dozen parents. And then, um, towards, towards right before COVID, it was less parents, more guard, you know, more, more security guys. Uh, but to start out, of course, we only have one security guy that we have. Duane would sit in and then the building administrator for whatever building we were working, you know, or working with. And then the parents and I think maybe Deanna sat in once or twice. But yeah, we, I mean, it wasn't a ton of people. It was like maybe, maybe a dozen at the most because very seldom did everybody show up too.
I've been screaming for it ever, ever since COVID hit, the, the, there are several items that are really putting the district in harm's way that we need to take care of quickly. We still have not signed off on a district emergency response policy.
Right.
So there's that, the district emergency procedures handbook.
Okay, we all get resolved overnight, but we have to get things moving again in the right direction.
I'm just here to stress the, the, the importance and the need for it.
So how do we, that's important.
Yeah, so I'll work on scheduling that and keeping the board apprised of, um, what's on that, that particular agenda for that committee.
And.
Absolutely.
I do have one additional question for Glenn, if you don't mind. Um, a couple weeks back, we had a, uh, drill, lockdown drill, I believe. Uh, can you debrief us on, on that? And, you know, maybe highlight, you know, what went well, what didn't?
Sure.
And then I'll probably have some follow-up questions.
Sure.
Based on that.
So in conjunction with my building, Mr. Bailey, my building principal, um, we came up with a plan to, because I am required by law to have a, some type of a drill once a month, every month that children or students are in school. And one of those per year has to be a lockdown drill. So I developed the plan, um, to test not only the school's physical security aspect, but also the teachers', um, protocols for doing a lockdown drill. The drill was fairly simple. I brought in volunteer actors from, they were adult advisors from the Benton County Sheriff's Department Explorer Program. Uh, they posed as students, dressed up as students and gained access, not through the front door. Um, so that was not a good thing. But they did gain access. They went around, they handed out little slips of paper that were an incentive to students to collect a, uh, a sports drink and a bag of potato chips for participating in the drill. Um, they were color-coded to represent four different things, or there were four different color slips. There were sixty-six slips handed out by four actors. And I've got, I got probably eighty percent of those slips back from students turning. The results were that, like I said, those, all four actors were let in by different students and one staff member in, in, through doors that were not supposed to be gained access. So. In the afternoon, I brought one of the actors back in, had them go randomly to a pre-selected classroom. And then just, they just went there and sat in the class. And then if the student or the actor was not engaged by other students or by the teacher, within the first five minutes, they were to walk up and hand it, hand the teacher a pre-printed scenario, identifying who they were, what, and why they were there. And then, uh, this teacher was to follow the protocols established by the school for lockdown. Showed some serious, uh, training needs that we need to get in that, uh, fashion, so. Any questions?
Kind of going along your last statement, so, uh, obviously we're, we're deficient in some training and protocols. How often, you know, are protocols gone over, taught, reiterated, you know, uh, with the district? And, you know, and the frequency?
So, protocols are generally handed out in, in the emergency procedures handbook. Seeing how a district hadn't done that, I went ahead and I pre-printed one out. And at the permission of my principal, I handed them out each teacher and explained, okay, these are the protocols that we need to follow under these circumstances. Is it trained district ride? No, but that's something that we had recommended and we just haven't gotten around to getting it done.
So, um, so you're at the high school, correct?
Correct.
And you, you provided these, this, uh, SOP or procedures for lockdown?
Correct.
Was it like one time, I mean, I'm trying to get around, like, how are we getting, are, are, is our staff being trained properly to handle that situation? Cause I know if I was in that situation, whether it was fake or not, if I got handed a slip of paper, you know, at the beginning of the year, I probably wouldn't be able to remember it.
Correct.
Um, so I guess, are, are, do we have a, do we have a standard operating procedure from the board down that reiterates training, um, you know, and, and going over these protocols to just kind of get it drilled into, you know, our, the staff that they will understand and be able to fluidly handle a situation if it does arise?
Yeah, so during, during the COVID lockdown, um, one of the focuses was to keep people at work. And so we had these flip charts. We, it's a pretty standard thing that districts have posted within rooms. In fact, I think it's state law that you have to have, um, a map for exits, right? With fire drill. Um, with that being said, our security, uh, officers rewrote those. Um, and so we had some different examples to go off of, but they updated all of that. They, they did need to be updated. We had, um, employees listed on the district from years, like probably five year, five to seven years before I ever came on, right? So it was, it was time to do that, but the shift, um, moved from, um, really focusing on some of that work to getting students back in classrooms. And it was so fluid during that time period that some of that, some of those conversations around training got left out. Now, in that. Thanks, Siri. So, uh, also, also during that time period, one of kind of the, the core consultants that the district used, John Lathinas passed away. And so he did the gap training with the T-ball bats and, um, kind of had the philosophy of defending and fortifying a classroom. And so Glenn and I believe Scott Hudson are actually certified in that training. Um, so we do have, we've hired new people on and there is some redundancy that needs to take place as far as offering the same training again. Because the gap training was a two, two-part training. Um, so yeah, there, there is some work to do as far as when we bring new people on, saying, this is how you're gonna defend your classroom. You're gonna need to read, you know, these procedures because that's how you're gonna need to lock down your classroom. Drilling is, drilling in through repetition, just like athletics, is the best way to get people to learn it over time. And so the more we do those, um, that, you know, announced or unannounced, uh, probably the safer we are. So you have anything to add to that?
No, I, what, what Matt is saying is correct. We, training through repetition is the best thing. Unfortunately, when I collected all the baseball bats from my teachers in, in the move up to the new high school, I couldn't just by liability alone issue those back out because I can't certify that these people have been trained. If I hand somebody a baseball bat and they injure somebody without training, you know, the district's hanging out there. And I can't let the district get, you know, so I'm, I'm caught in that spot. Do I, do I let the teacher get hung up or do I let the district?
But I don't disagree with that, but I think, I think, uh, my general, uh, comment was more broad, you know, we, we should have operating procedures for lockdown a- at every school and just the training on those procedures. I'm not talking about like, you know, we use a bat or we're going through the gap training, uh, which is, I, I think is well worth it. But if we don't know what those procedures are for a lockdown, how, how do we expect, you know, teachers to, to perform i- in that type of scenario? Cause you know, it'd be highly stressful, I imagine. And if they don't know, I, I, I guess it's just knowing the procedures is what I'm getting at. Um, but.
Yeah, it even goes beyond that, that, um, there's also work that probably has to be done at the substitute level. So that our substitutes know it. Ideally, everybody in that classroom, and we're moving to, we're moving to a level where students would also be able to call lockdowns. So if there is somebody with, you know, there is an active shooter, the office doesn't have to make that call. We're not gonna waste time in calling that. So ideally, everybody on that campus would know what's going on. So we're not at that level. Um, part of, you know, I, I think that they have, have it drafted and ready to publish and, and go and put off flip charts within the classrooms. Um, we do need to focus time and attention on that. And then we also need to probably carve out part of the budget for our teachers to be trained in gap training and in those pieces. But we need to say, as part of the teacher contract, we're gonna pay X number hours to participate in these, these trainings. And so, uh, time is money. And so part of that's, you know, we're, part of this discussion also, we talked about adding extra personnel, things like that. Their budgetary needs to go along with it, um, whether it's personnel or resources.
So I'm, am I understanding correctly, there hasn't been since COVID, so March twenty twenty, any training, standard operating procedures of any of the municipal district staff, teachers, employees?
As far as training on lockdowns and things like that with the building level, and I think our principals might be able to speak to this. I know that they're running their drills. Um, I don't know if all of the flip charts that were there, that our teachers have been trained in, had, were collected or where those are at, they were a black, they were a black flip chart with, um.
Well, not by you, but not by you. Even you've asked for the S O C, but like we haven't brought in any of these, we've given them to them today to come in and do gap training.
Yeah, no, but my, myself and Scott Hudson here at the middle school, I know Scott has trained his teachers. And that's what he's allowed to do, um, but we need to do the entire district.
Would it make sense that that's part of like the week before school starts that district, I mean?
Yes. Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Glenn, weren't we talking almost exactly two years ago about doing subs and, and gap training? Right, like two months before COVID hit, that's where we were at?
Yes.
Be good for us to pick up then.
I can speak for Witstrand. Uh, Kurt has worked with every teacher in the building and actually did lockdown drill in the classroom with them, um, at the start of the year.
But the piecemeal, um.
We just need to make sure it's different wise, that we, we are making sure everybody in the district is receiving the safe break.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Mark. All right, uh, Special Services Department, any questions? Okay, Cindy, are you available, please?
Cindy Dean, are you there? Sure, my question, if we could get that to her, is that she says she's had thirty-eight referrals for I E C year-to-date. That how many evaluations have been done? It said four new evaluations this month, so I want to know year-to-date. So.
Doesn't every referral end in an evaluation to either go in or go out?
I can name a Lionel ends, um, who does a more in-depth evaluation? So I don't know if she's referring to it in a general sense or she's referring to it in a, like a deeper sense of.
Uh, Technology Department report. Any questions, other questions for Sean?
I do have.
Okay, Sean, are you still there?
I am, Peggy.
One of your projects listed is fixing damaged Chromebooks from last year. Um, how many, well, I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, but how many books were damaged? And what percentage of those had insurance and what percentage did the district end up footing the bill?
So I don't have a definite number for you. I could probably get one if you would like. I would venture to say, uh, just watching them come through weekly, we have damaged Chromebooks. Typically, there are keys or there are kids eating over top of them. A few screens, I wrote, which, which I expected to be our biggest issue, but there are a few screens broken. It typ- it typically tends to just be, uh, use of the Chromebook and maybe not the appropriate use of a Chromebook as opposed to like deliberate misuse of a Chromebook. And, and, uh, the jacks, that tends to be a big issue too with the Chromebooks, especially in the younger, uh, children is where they charge them. The charging jack, uh, tends to get damaged. Typically, and Danny, uh, who is doing the technology there with you today could probably answer it too. I would venture to say about fifty percent of the Chromebooks that come back with damage have insurance. So it's not a huge big deal. Uh, the fifty percent that come back damaged that have issues, we don't recoup the money for that. They typically come back from kids that have withdrawn from the district and we're never going to see those fees. We still put fees on their accounts, uh, so if they do come back into the district, that will flag. But we don't have an accounting for that unless they come back into the district. And the, the, you ask about the expense and, and how much of that we're having to foot the bill for. Because the insurance that we charge at the beginning of the year for parents that opt to buy that insurance, that stays in-house. We're not third-partying that out. So the amount of money that we collect at the beginning of the school year is what we use to repair those Chromebooks. On top of the Chromebooks or devices that go end of life, we have a company that we sell those Chromebooks to and they give us a credit for parts. So to date, uh, we haven't spent a whole lot of. uh, we haven't spent a whole lot of money in the actual repair outside of staffing costs. It takes quite a bit of time to repair a Chromebook and it's time that our desktop technician is using. But as far as the money for the report, the parts, we, I don't think, you could ask Craig that question too. Uh, we are not out a tremendous amount of money for the actual repairs.
Thank you.
So this may be as much of a question for Craig as it is for you, but if we have a Chromebook or whatever that comes back, needs repairs, there's a bill due on it. Uh, back in the good old days, if you, you know, got a library book or a, uh, any, any book and you lost it, you had fifty bucks tagged on your account. You didn't get your record sent to the next school and or couldn't pick up a diploma at the end of it. Is that still in effect?
It is. At an elementary level, that's a whole lot harder to, uh, that doesn't hold a whole lot of clout at an elementary level because they don't need their records to go to another school. At a high school level, that does hold quite a bit of clout because for us, holding those records back uh, causes quite a bit of issues for them transferring and getting their credits. If damage occurs at an elementary level, that stays with them. So if they leave in the sixth grade and they never pay their fee and then they come back to us in high school, that follows them. So that, that will stay, uh, as they, as they come back into our district and then.
As, as a late middle schooler, high schooler, then, uh, basically they can't get their records and or, you know, an official diploma until the bill's square.
That's correct. But the bulk of, but the bulk of our damage is at a younger level. So, I mean, our high schoolers, our high schoolers don't use their Chromebooks as much as I would like to see them use them, but they also don't have the crumbs and the soda pop and the sticky fingers like our elementary kids do.
The catch is, is that you can't do it on a migrant student, um, because their mobility isn't subject to like a decision of theirs, um, or McKinney Bento or homeless, homeless student. So there, there's laws that prevent that. And then, and then even the kind of the ethical decision about do you not want a kid to graduate over a hundred bucks, right? So, yeah, but ho- holding them sometimes or even the threat of saying that you're gonna hold them gets people to move sometimes.
I had a quick question. Do we, do we have very many that actually leave the district and take the book, the Chromebook with them and you never see it again?
So we have two that that has recently happened to. Uh, one, one family says they moved and it's lost and they just, if they find it, they'll send it back. And one uh, family said they're not sending it back. So I've had two recently that that's happened to.
Thanks, Sean.
You're welcome.
All right. Have a nice holiday, Sean.
Thanks, you too.
Good luck on the house.
Yep. All right. Moving along to the superintendent's report.
Okay, I have two issues. Um, Amy Cook Lab, but we're able to make it to win a break without any snow delays. Um, but I sent on, I actually had a conversation with her today, sent on some information about electric buses. Um, in the past, uh, the state has, has, um, created incentives for electric buses as well as, at one time, it was propane on buses as well to try and reduce carbon emissions. Um, so that's something the board would need to think about. I think that, J N C has a goal of tran- having the transportation departments and public schools shift to electric buses by twenty thirty, I think is what Amy said this morning. Um, so the kind of the idea globally about will we move in that direction feasibly, we could uh, twenty twenty-nine, we could replace our entire fleet with diesel and or oftentimes other things that shift um, within, within pers- you know, kind of legislative perspectives. Um, so. So, yeah, uh, I want the board to kind of be thinking about that. Um, you know, just have that on, have that on your radar. Um, we've continued our work, uh, with MoMA and Laura Schneider. Um, in E L A with the high school and instructional leadership and, um, developing our building leaders with MoMA. I sent off the doodle poll, um, to the board. I already kind of talked through that, that most board members are looking at um, Wednesdays or, you know, having informational or work sessions on Wednesdays. I also sent on to the board, um, a draft proclamation and a draft letter. And the letter, um, I can keep that from me, or if you wanna see me add any verbiage to that, I definitely can. The proclamation, I would like to include a board voice on that. So if there are any perspectives about what should be added or deleted, um, I would like that guidance, or even if we want it to be instead of a proclamation to be a legislative platform. Um, so the, you know, the proclamation, um, has lines for board member signatures. So, um, if, if not, everybody was in agreement with what it should say, um, it might be better to have a legislative platform that we advocate for. Tweo, I sent a, uh, to the board, uh, this week in Olympia and the different legislative platforms. Um, so we're gearing up to have some of those conversations and contact our reps. Um, in addition, I, uh, we didn't add in the paper wishing the community a Merry Christmas on behalf of the board and the district. And so that's in the, uh, the process paper. And then just, um, just kind of the last two pieces, that a lot of our employees are, um, off for the holidays. However, when you walked in, I hope that you noticed the wax floors are custodian and grounds of maintenance have been hard at work. And so I want to commend them. Um, they don't always get the love that they deserve. And then, of course, um, Casey Blair has requested to have avid students, uh, present to the board, January sixth, February ninth, and February twenty-sixth. And so, um, Craig and I were able to button up a couple of negotiations, but we still have some to go. Um, so that is my report to the board. Any questions on any of that information? Yeah.
Have you had, um, Sean Mumford review that for any liability?
Yeah, I did. Um, the proclamation is, um, his perspective is is that it could, it could kind of come back on, you know, on the board in a, in a political way. So for instance, we're saying that we're gonna advocate for this position. If it's top down, then community members or taxpayers may take the stance that, you know, the board didn't do enough. Why didn't the board um, really fight for that hard? Or what are we gonna do now? Um, so he said it may be, it may be better. As a legislative platform, but the end of the day, what you're trying to do is develop an advocacy position or position to, um, inform elected officials about where we stand. And so he understood it from that perspective. Um, he had some recommendations as far as additions, um, as far as long-term or launch to Nevada um, around the vaccine. Um, so that was, you know, he had had some recommends. And, and then I said, well, I'm gonna, you know, ask the board kind of for their voice and, um, he agreed that that was good too. Um, so.
I, I would like to have a letter or memorandum from Mr. Mumford regarding any liability.
Okay.
That anything like that, that any proclamation or a letter would create for the district or for.
Okay. Okay.
This, the proclamation we were talking about was one that we spoke about at last meeting, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you'd like to see a draft, uh, of those, if you'd like to.
Yeah, I can do that. I can do that. And then I will, once I get, um, yeah, Mr. Mumford, um, once I get Mr. Mumford's legal opinion on that, I will forward that directly to the board.
Uh, student representative reports. To Hannah first night.
Hello. Hi, hi. So we had our two band concerts on Thursday or last Thursday. I don't quite remember. It's been a bit of a blur lately. But they were a lot of fun though. We, the brass were kind of tired by the end of them. And then Sunday, there was the show at the Princess Theater, the jazz show, which some of you may have seen, and there were also Nutcracker performances at the Princess, like before that during the weekend. I attended the Saturday closing night performance. It was a lot of fun. And I'm kind of just looking forward to a break. Get to see my family and ask my aunt and uncle to come.
Does that use the?
I applied for and got accepted into a fellowship or leadership fellowship. There was, uh, being offered through C E C. Fellowship is centered around equity and justice in the education system. Uh, so that's.
Jersey.
Right. Board member report.
I care. I would like to say, Hannah, you sounded wonderful in your concert.
Thank you.
I, a couple of tickets popped up, uh, Dan gave me a call last second. My son and I went. It was a wonderful show. Uh, he's done wonderful things with the band. And for, for those of you that don't know, I would like to give a, a shout out to Jess. She fought, fought for that auditorium long and hard, and it is a wonderful space. Uh, still fighting, trying to get a, a show put on, uh, in April for the Seattle Rock Opera, two steps forward, one step back, seems like every day. So hopefully it'll come together.
Is that, I have a follow-up question. Is that travel that would be not allowed that we were talking about earlier?
What, what it is is, is I saw a show a few months ago and I thought, man, this would be awesome to bring to our new theater. And then they also do, uh, uh, workshops. So they would do, they would do a workshop with our kids, with, with our band. And then, uh, well, what it was gonna be was, we were hoping they could do a workshop and then like on Friday night, do the show and then have some of the kids come in and like play with them. Uh, schedules did not work well, so they were gonna, what is probably gonna be is a Sunday evening show. And then, uh, Monday morning, they'll do a workshop with the band. So it's kind of awkward, but it's the best we could put together.
I do, sure. So I've had some parents reach out to me, um, asking a couple of different things. I had some parents asking about ski bus. And they didn't know there was a ski bus, the reasons that there weren't gonna be a ski bus, if it's COVID related or insurance related or something else. I think, uh, they would like to hear communication on that. I did a tour with, uh, Diana and Jeannie Wentz, who of the construction at, um, Heights and K R V. And it was interesting to see what was going on and the challenges that we're facing. The contractor we walked through with, um, River View said, would it have been better to tear it down and build new if he was knowing everything we know now? Absolutely. That would have been much smarter. Um, heights, I, you know, I think there's a lot of concerns about what's going on with height and equipment shortages. I think it would be interested for everybody to hear an update from the contractors on that. And, you know, if those buildings are going to be open, progress force. I know it's hard to say absolutely they're gonna be open. So with construction and delays and winter weather and what could happen. So I think we need to have planned be, and I think that that needs to be communicated to the public as clearly and efficiently as possible. And I will touch back. And that is what I am hearing. Um, every time I talk to a parent, I talk to people, I talk to teachers. They're saying, you know, more communication in every possible way, by email, like social media, hard letters out and just talking about what's going on. This all came up, especially regarding the recent, um, TikTok issue that came up with violence in schools. They said, okay, my friends at Kennewick, Richland, Grand, and I got an email from the district about it. It was on the news. It's all over social media. Why isn't Professor saying anything? And I think we want to have the position that we're educating our families. And they're not hearing it secondhand through other people and saying, there's TikTok nationwide issue going out. I know it's an internet threat and it could be, you know, easily, you know, nothing happens. But I think it's important that we're putting the message out and controlling the messaging and not, um, rumors. I think that is when miscommunication develops and causes war. What is the? I mean, I have heard. No, no, this was, this was last, last week, last Friday, the last day of school. Nationwide, there was a, a TikTok video of a series of videos, um, implementing that there would be threats of violence spread out at schools nationwide. And it was taken seriously enough that many areas, school districts emailed parents and put out, um, messages on their social media. It was on all the local news channels. And messages put out, I reached out to our administrators, um, asking if we were gonna put out a message and it was told next. And I think, um, I had several parents and teachers say, why are we putting something out in response? We don't want it to look like, you know, we don't know what's happening. And we don't wanna look like, okay, well, we're letting everybody else tell you what's happening and we're, and so I think, you know. I did, I did.
Security guards, um, because it was so, because it was nationwide. Um, there were actually like CNN discredited or devalued it because it wasn't, it wasn't specific to a school, a state, a region. Um, so in spite of that, some, some districts did offer communication. Um, it was, we decided not to, um, kind of credit the threat. Even though our security officers were alerted to it, the prosecutor was alerted to it. So, yeah, we didn't, we didn't put out, um, communication on that, uh, because it was so ambiguous. So, but in the future, we will work to, um, I guess, do some of that with our new website. Uh, we will have basically an app and that app will be able to do push notifications. And so, um, it will also be able to publish to every single site at the same time, whether it's social media, Twitter, um, whatever. And so, um, yeah, it'll be able, we'll be able to post everything. Um, and it'll go to a parent's app and they'll have a push notification that the district sent out communication on that. So, um, and you can, we can actually publish it from, from our phone. Um, so a principal, um, a district administrator, whomever, will be able to get on almost like a text and, uh, write something and then send it out to all parents.
And my last point would be, I think, I think we can find a better location for our school for meeting. I, I think we, all of us are nodding our heads. Uh, I think we have a beautiful new auditorium and library. There's more parking. It's easier for the public to get to, uh, this is all, you can go down the hall, out door, in the door. And it's dark enough for, you know, and I think we need to be showing off our best. And that's the new place, Paul. And I think we should consider moving our meeting.
I was, I was along on the tour at, um, Heights and River View. And it was interesting. And the biggest thing is, um, getting the things they need. He was saying that people are waiting forever for windows. So, but they're still pushing to hopefully have the kids in in August. Um, I got to sit in on the committee to choose the Crystal Apple Award for a teacher in our district. That was really interesting. The, the applications, we have a lot of dedicated teachers that other people realize how dedicated they are. Respect. I was lucky enough to attend the choir concert and it was. And it was great. Our music department is really ramped up with Dan Norris and Bailey. Does he pronounce it Maya or Maya? Maya, yeah. Um, they, they deserve a lot of kudos. Um, I sat in on the Zoom meeting for Thrive. Um, I was one of the lucky people in town that got to attend that cracker. That was fun. Cause the tickets went fast. And I was at the basketball game Friday night and some people from Moxie were sitting by us and they said, we are so jealous. Can we trade you a schools? I mean, people, you know, they said, wow, this is unbelievable. And congrats, we're proud of you.
Jason.
Time you got to me, most of mine were already done. One of the things I did get an opportunity to get some information from the Pascal superintendent on the levy that they're running the same time we are. It's got some good graphics, uh, kind of just a quick and dirty. I shared it with Matt earlier. Uh, but wanted to share it with the rest of the board like, not, I'm not saying we gotta copy it, but it. But it, but I think it's a good pictorial. On how to maybe sell, you know, sell the levy going forward. So that, that's. I guess once it gets to Matt, I keep it.
But this is what. Yeah, and so. The, this is what we had. We were limited by the public disclosure commission on really presenting the facts. With that being said, I, you know, Jason came in and showed me that one of the things that I think Pascal did really well. That I think we can actually. That we can mimic on ours is that number one, um, they have really familiar colors. And so that Pascal purple, like the Pascal blue box and the Chihuahua navy blue, they use those familiar colors. And then the, the other thing that they did well was the graphics. And so at a glance, your eye will catch it in those, those graphs and charts. I think really do, really help a lot to, to explain informationally. And so those are two components. We are right now, um, in fact, just this week. Um, we're working, Selena's working with, um, a company that will help us draft. Um, and create that in order to, and they'll also do the bulk mailing for us to get out to our taxpayers. Um, I know Director Riley had, um, had emailed me also about, um, doing some informational presentations. And so we're, uh, we're working on scheduling those informational presentations and getting that. Getting that, um, those mailers out into, um, to the community's hands so that, so they're informed.
I'm a real visual learner and I mean, for me, it's like this does. Yeah.
No, so the, the last thing I, I have is just to reiterate what Elisa mentioned. You know, moving this meeting to the high school, I don't know if it takes a motion, if that's, or if we can just. Do it. It's, it, like I said, it's a beautiful facility.
We have to do a, a resolution. We could do, we could do our next meeting, a special, a special meeting, note it that way, but to have it at the same time. And then have a resolution on that. Well, you might not have to because it was never updated when we moved here. So it still says the Foster High School Library. So I believe technically, if we went to the Foster High School Library, we're okay, we probably best practice would be, you know, updated. But we could do, just have special meetings noted until.
Yeah. We think you'd have to, but.
So that would be the special meeting for the high school for next meeting and then do a. Yeah, that would be, that would make it, that being compliant with the meeting act, so. Our next regular scheduled meeting, we posted as a special meeting. And you would want to run all this through Mr. Mumford as well.
A special meeting on January 12th.
Yep.
At the high school, library.
Do we have it at the high school library?
I interrupt. One second.
Or do we need the auditorium?
I, I would. I would probably, I don't know what all this takes to, to get done. And I don't know if moving this, I don't know if the 12th would be the appropriate meeting, I guess, is what I'm trying to get at. That maybe whether it's, you know, the technology folks figure out where are the best places, whether it's the auditorium, if it's used as a library, what we need to get in there to make it happen. That's my own, that was my own.
No, that's an important point. Yep, we, we could find that out if it's possible to do that.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, I think, I think it's time to move.
Okay, you'll work on that? All right. All right, consent items. I would enter in a motion. To approve the consent items as listed.
So move.
Motion by Jason, seconded by. Is there any discussion?
I have one, if I can find it, give me a second. I know, sorry. On the meeting minutes, I think, and I don't even take some. You do, I think you do a good job at taking the meeting minutes. One of the things that I noticed in this from the last meeting, it was lengthy, uh, with all the best school improvement plans. But I think it might be important to put, to be able to summarize some of the comments and questions from the board. That way, there's some context to the, to the individual item. Uh, for instance. I think. Only after the, the high school, after Mr. Bailey did his presentation, which is that they answered questions from the board. And I don't know if there's a way we could add. Not all the questions, but way to summarize the perception or concept from the board or questions that were, were asked. I don't know if that's just a comment.
I know the way we can do them because we've had them where every, everything was listed.
Oh, yeah.
And not, and then not, is that, um, if, if people want to go back and see what all of the text is, they can go back and review the tapes. And, and so it's kind of got away from all that he said, she said. So.
I get that, but if we're doing it in Spanish. The videos aren't in Spanish.
Well, that's true.
So to give some clarity to the, to the Spanish minutes, um, it may just.
So maybe we need to just modify it a little bit.
A summary of, of board comments or perception. I'm not saying answered like specifics, but. I just don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, something that if you were to read it, you could kind of get the gist of it.
But not all of it, he said, she said, just a real encapsulated, okay. We could try that. Any other? All right, so motion by Jason, seconded by Elisa. With a, a little bit of a change in the future of the minute. Uh, all in favor, please, by the way, say hi.
Hi.
Hi, so all yes, thank you. Okay, action items. A voucher and payroll. And Craig, you had a comment you'd like to make about payroll.
I've done a little bit of research. Regarding. Director Rayner and I had an interesting conversation with the city of Pacer. And I'm not saying that we propose to do this and maybe do, need to do a little more research, but. See if Pacer actually approves the board of, the city council approves the payroll, the meeting following. The last meeting of the month. So in other words, their September payroll is actually approved by the board. In, uh, in October, city council. And I've. Reached out to the state auditor's office. They said that would be allowed. I don't believe that school districts do that for some reason in state of Washington, but I can do some more research on that. Having said that, um, I did revise this form. Handoff the bottom, uh, because you'll notice on the, on the vouchers, on the accounts payable, there is a stamp that we put on there. On the vouchers that I certify, you know, that everything's. But the invoices are legitimate, uh, the. Service has been rendered, uh, so forth, but yet on the payroll, I've never done that for some reason, so. It's felt that I'm the auditing officer, I want to certify to you that. As best as I can, my knowledge, but. Time sheets are accurate and first employee has the right to. Tell the perjury that they throw out the time sheets and so forth, so I just thought that I would. Put that at the bottom and then I wanted to give more detail. There, there are many of our, most of our employees have direct deposit payroll, just goes directly into the bank accounts. There are some employees that actually receive a warrant or a check, mostly subs. This, it can be sporadic, so. And then there's, in addition to the. The payroll piece, and employees obviously have deductions. And the employer, we have, um, payroll taxes that we, that we pay. So I've broken it down to, to the four different types of transactions, if you will. The payroll warrants. And there's, there's the warrant numbers and then there's the direct deposit total. And the accounts payable warrant is also the, the detail of that, that, that I have given you a copy of. Next to eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. And then on the last page is the, after the payroll taxes and electronic fund transfers. So those four items equal the, the payroll that kind of question to be approved. So. The, the timing is such that. We get time sheets by the tenth of the month. And it takes us at least a couple of weeks to process the payroll. The timing in order to get the payroll in the board packet on a Friday before, like, for example, there's no, we finish this, I could, you know, two o'clock, three o'clock this afternoon. All the processing, so it's, unless we can. Go through the process of approving the payroll after the fact, in the first meeting, pattern of the month. That would be great, but Alex, I need to be, do a little more research on that. Because typically school districts approve it at the month that it's being paid. But just wanted to look at this and see if this is any more data than I know last time it was scanty, if there was anything. So that was, that's just my comments as far as, as far as the payroll for this. It's like a welcome conversation or. Be back on that.
Well, concerning the, uh. The payroll deal, I, I do appreciate, you know, a breakdown. I would be interested to see if, as a district, you can approve them after the, they go out like, like your emergency. I think there's some other things that, that tie payroll anyways, you know, as far as contracts and et cetera, agreements and so forth, that. Anyway, I, I think, I think it's a good step forward. I, I really do appreciate it.
I think it doesn't hold up any pay, checks or payment. It would just be the first Google comes at the next.
Correct, and the rationale is that we kept correcting the bargaining agreements, there's. You know, the board approves the pay raises and those kind of things, so. It's not like, you know, we're paying things that the board hasn't agreed to, you know, ratified contracts or whatever, so. Maybe we could be the first district that does that. It's okay, trend setters.
Right, thank you.
So that's the payroll and we can discuss the accounts payable pieces if you would like.
Okay. So, uh, any questions regarding the vows?
A few. It, at first I'd like to spend a lot of time with the, with Craig. You're, uh, I don't remember what day it was yesterday or the day before, I can't remember. But anyway.
So long, I can't remember.
Yeah. Um, but a lot of my questions were answered and I truly appreciate it, so. But I do have some other questions, primarily, um, when we bid fuel, we bid diesel on a three-year cycle. Uh, from my understanding. Is that, is that typical? And I know we talked about this. At length, but is it typical? Is it, is it something we want to bid on an annual basis? To see if, if, because I guess my concern is, would be is, is we award an entity a bid, they get it for three years. And you never know what's gonna change, whether another vendor could give us a, a better benefit. I'm not really sure.
The process on that is. We do bid every three years and. They give us the price plus, with a cost plus a factor. And, uh, year number two, we write the vendor and say, are you, are you interested in renewing that under the same terms? Yes, year three, are you interested in renewing the terms for year three? That has been our process for multiple years, but it's not, there's no reason why we couldn't change it if, if you would prefer to do that.
Does it, thank you, you're welcome. There's a multi-year bid. Keep people, you know, keep what's more competitive, a single year bid or a multi-year bid. So, yeah, like, like Craig said, we can change it, but trying to get the best price and trying to get them to come after you and give you the best prices. Part of what, part of the discussion, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I, I just figured I posed a question. I don't know. I don't know if it's a better, if it's three is better than one or. We can't so far.
I've bid in smaller, you know, in a smaller setting, we used to bid every single year and we would. The board I worked with in the past would compare diesel prices. You know, month to month, year to year, um, so it's something that they were, uh. Concerned about and wanted to look into. We can, we can ask around at different districts and see what price they're getting as well. And see, you know, how they, how they bid it and see, you know, if they're getting a better deal than us or not. I think that, that's part of the, the question too, is there somebody out there that's, you know. You know, beating us or beating the system.
First thing I'll do is find out when the bids up. All right, well, that might be up this year. I, I can't speak to that without looking at the, the details.
I can, I could speak for, for when I was at the smaller district. And historically, we did the three. Prices tended to not go down. So we could, we could lock in at a lower price and was a, I'd say we.
Well, you say typically, it's the. Market price, you know, a discounted price because we don't have to pay all the federal taxes and that, and then. The, the difference is the percent.
And by.
On top of it.
And by going with a three-year contract with a pay tend to be a little bit better. A little bit better deal, but anyway, that's. It always was a, I always felt like I was getting a little bit better of a deal by walking in.
Administratively, it's not a big deal for us. And you just put in the paper and get the bids in a little bit of time, that's not a big deal.
Couple more questions and then we'll. It looks like we have got. Multiple, well, a couple that are elevator repair, uh, associated to the high school. One is. One is, if, based on what I could understand, that cone Pasadena, I believe is an elevator repair. My question, you know, is this a repair that should be under warranty, it's for four thousand dollars? And being, you know, considering the elevators in four months old, why are we putting a four thousand dollar bill, I guess is my question. It just says high school on the code, so I don't know. It could be.
And this, this bill actually says travel through Prosser Avenue, so that would be the old high school. That's good news, not the new high school. I did want to point out, as I said earlier, the payment to micro for hundred ninety-six thousand, that's the grant that I referred to. Emergency connectivity grant. Will be reimbursed for that.
Decipher.
That helps.
Is there, is there going to be an additional code for the new high school or an additional code for the old high school?
So what we've done is, instead of changing everything around, we have, so anything that's, since Heights is now the old high school, we're using their location to charge the money to Heights, even though they're at the old high school, so the new high school is still going to be forty-five hundred on that. As the, as the location. That make sense? Okay. And I'm going to work, Director Ari, I'm giving you the same packet of decipher ship that.
I'm going to need bigger font, I can.
Okay, there's some of those things that probably aren't really applicable. I mean, I could, I can make it easier because the payroll pieces and the benefits, you're not going to see those codes, so I could certainly revise that for you.
I might, I've just got to find it, it's deep in here. So the, so that Cone Pasadena, if I'm reading the check correctly, it's coded to forty-five hundred, which is Prosser High School.
That's probably a mistake, yeah.
Okay, so it just needs to be recoded, that's probably where.
Are there any other questions? We have a question about the twenty thousand dollars for the Home Depot.
The Home Depot.
The Home Depot, nine zero four four five.
Yep. Multiple, multiple invoices, most of those, you have the little cheat sheet, those were like custodial supplies.
District-wide. That represented in the beginning of the year.
Just to follow up on her question, that would be, would that be part of the bid process, or just can be?
You don't go up for bidding?
For custodial services, would be my question, custodial services?
We have not done that for that. So this, this bill is for October, November, and a few charges in December. The latter part of October, the full month of November, and a couple of days in December.
Yes, without knowing, it's without a hardware store, they probably went to Home Depot because it's
Oh, I think we get Sunnyside, too, I think we get every hardware store in the Yakima Valley, Home Depot.
We have tried, I know that Mr. Rayner and I have talked about trying to have a little more detail on what these invoices represent.
Have we ever had a finance committee that met with you, and said, you know, met with you with over asking these questions in the committee, and came back and said, recommend we approve that. And I know city that have.
Sometimes in the past, we've had a meeting, like at six-thirty, before the board meeting, to answer some of those questions, doesn't have to be at that time, but we haven't had a finance committee per se, the only thing we have had is a couple of board members, when you started in the budget preparation stage. I'd meet, you know, once a month, or a couple of times a week, a couple of times a month, and go over different items as we can put in preparation.
Is that easy open to you?
Sure, yeah.
I think that's a good idea, if we get into the details of it, and the committee can make the review.
Want to talk about starting that soon, or?
A few times too, and made my speed, you guys are welcome to sit there.
But you know, I think that it's probably really important for.
It is very informative the first time, and after that, it's painful.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on, Karen.
All right, so I would entertain a motion to approve the vouchers and payroll as presented. I make a motion to.
And I will second it.
By at least seconded by Andy, question? Hearing that, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. That's where I got mixed up, because normally we approve them and then ask them questions.
Okay, the Pixelot streaming service. I, we've seen this before, I entertain a motion to approve Pixelot use agreement as presented. So this contract is not. When you look at section eight, at the bottom, you have eight through E, and it says exclusive broadcast school in the box, non-exclusive broadcast school in the box. And about two-thirds of this contract applies to whether you're an exclusive broadcasting school or a non-exclusive broadcast school. Is there an updated form, or do we know which one we're going to?
That's just the draft, right, that we need to fill out.
Yeah, exactly. Our preference would be to be an exclusive broadcast school, that gives us the most benefit when it comes to cost share, or revenue share on the other end, over the lifetime of the contract. It's, the whole concept is an answer to the live streaming questions and desire to have in our community. We, we looked at a bunch of different ones, we actually looked at these type of cameras to use two years ago, it was cost prohibitive at that time. They're about five thousand dollars a piece. Since then, they have joined with the WIAA and NFHS to a partnership so that they can provide this opportunity for schools with the opportunity to revenue share after the timeframe. Timeframe's five years, as long as we stay with them, there's no cost to us, and they do come in and implement, put them up, connect, all that good stuff, so.
We want to approve the contract.
Correct, and even doing that, that still provides us the opportunity to provide down the line, if we want to have school groups doing some kind of broadcasting themselves, we can integrate with that, that works for, will benefit our kids' programs. So we think that this is a, it also provides an opportunity to do this without having to man them. For every contest that you, in the past, we've had to man that, and have connectivity over wireless or hotspot, which is very difficult. But working with them and working with our tech department, we can fix that at our stadium and in both gyms.
And the local guys that come in and broadcast radio, are they still going to be allowed to turn off the TV?
Yeah, they do the radio part, this would be the broadcast part. And then we can use this also day-to-day, we can use it for filming practices, we can use it for graduations, we can use it for, we have opportunities to do that, and we can integrate advertising, and we one-hundred percent of the advertising. Something we want to make sure we take.
Who's going to end up managing this system within the district, is that part of what you will do, or?
So as far as what's nice about the system, it integrates with our scheduling program. So currently, for every sports season, we create a schedule in the systems called Arbiter. And Arbiter and NFHS will all be integrated, so the, the expectation in here is that if we have this in a gym, and we have C-Quads or JV games, those will all be able to be broadcast. And if somebody has a subscription for that month or for that year, then they can pick full up any of them.
Okay, so it's football field in both gyms and high school, correct? Is there is there a way to add to maybe the softball and the baseball fields?
I, I don't know that answer, although I've had conversations about being more mobile. One of the benefits of what we did before by using an iPad is we could show up at a soccer game, we could show up at a cross-country. I think I broadcast across country from a golf cart with my phone one time, just in efforts to try to get that out. So there's often, they have a point-to-point system that we can consider, but that's not included in here, but would provide that mobility where we could do that, we could take that to a different location, and then we could have the conversation about the other sites, softball, baseball. Originally, this was two cameras, and through the conversation, we pushed it, said we could, let's give us three, we have two new gyms, and as they said, it makes sense. And Sean has been terrific, because we do have some issues that they have to solve, they told us they have a solution. That space between the stadium and the building is not connected, it's not wired, so we'll have to have a point-to-point fix for that, that they have that solution.
And I probably didn't read the, the contract as close as maybe Elisa and others, but I see it's free for five years, and then what happens after that? Do we?
The, the cameras are ours, and then the goal is that it would be continued function. This whole live stream has been a, two years of boy, it's just been melding, changing, working, and as the last, I think there's about sixty-five percent of the schools in the state of Washington were taking advantage of this, of course, they're hoping for more. But that just provides them more times when our kids are playing like they were this last weekend, up and went out to some of the opportunities to see those. Because once you subscribe, then you'll be able to get the Mustangs wherever they're at, if that school, obviously, is a part of this.
Oh, I see. I'm probably, I probably like free just as much as everybody does, I'm just trying to find the catch.
Right, well, the catch, our concern was, when we first had the conversation, was the big ticket of Richmond at five thousand, and then now, two years later, they're offering it for nothing, and that's the relationship, the partnership that WIAA has done with National Federation of High School Sports, and then Pixelot has come in as the camera provider to give this opportunity.
Okay, so because it was not completed appropriately, can we not approve it? I think we could do it again, I think I would move that we approve the Pickle Pop streaming service as amended, using the exclusive broadcasting school.
And I would second that.
Okay, so motion by Elisa to approve the agreement as amended. Seconded by Andy. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next action item is the lease agreement with Inspired Development, Development Center, and this is a one-year lease. I'd entertain a motion to approve the lease agreement.
I know that we approved the one-year lease agreement.
Okay, motion by G E, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jason, any questions of the lease agreement? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Ratification of agreement with the Educational Support Personnel of Prosser, ESPP.
Move to approve the agreement with the Educational Support Personnel of Prosser.
But Andy, is there a second? I have motion by Andy, seconded by Elisa, to approve the ratification of students with the Educational Support Personnel of Prosser, is there any discussion?
Do have one item, please, as far as negotiations, I think it's been, it's my understanding, it's forced direction to give Craig and Matt the capacity to negotiate, but I do think it is our responsibility to be part of those negotiations. You mentioned it earlier, Matt, that you've still got some ongoing negotiations, I think this board needs to be a part of that, not to negotiate, but to understand what is being negotiated. And unfortunately, this, these two items, even though they were drafted, well, they were, looks like approved last week or the week before, something like that, thirteenth and seventeenth. It's frustrating to me to not be aware of what was going on, even though we were, I was aboard them, so.
And I want to, I appreciate that, and I want to just add that these have been long, ongoing. The, especially with the security officers, that discussion started early last summer, and, and that has been there has been a lot of people involved in those negotiations, but unfortunately, we did have two new board members that did not have an opportunity. And that is, I apologize for that, people, hoping that we should have brought you both in, into the loop on, and
Yeah, it's a general.
But no, I agree, but just in general, as people say, that heated costs regarding. I think, I think it shows that you bet, thank you very much, that we, I think this shows that the breadth of material that's being covered deserves more time, and that's, we need to have steady sessions to get into the details. So, okay, so, thank you. So, we had a motion by Andy, seconded by Elisa, to approve the So we had a motion by Andy, seconded, seconded by Elisa to approve the agreement with the. Educational support personnel of Prosser. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes. All right, the next agreement was with the wage and benefit agreement with the school security officers. I didn't take a motion to approve that agreement.
Move to approve the agreement with school security officers.
Motion by Andy, seconded by Genie. Is this that? I have a question regarding the equipment allowance. What kind of equipment are we talking about?
And so best that say security on them. Gloves. Anything that helps them, yeah, ammunition if they're gonna practice. So.
What is the ammunition store?
Where's the ammunition store? I think you can buy rounds at.
No stores, store, not stores, yeah.
Yeah.
I understand.
Yeah. So each building does have a gun safe. But there, there you, the security officers were talking about it in a practice purpose. So part of the request was is that they would submit receipts for it and. Use that as part of their job duties or anything that really applies to their job, their work in Prosser.
And and well. Our insurance cover that. Insurance cover purchasing that equipment. Or that's it. The auditor and it's the same as the state auditor if we're using public funds for that.
Yeah, we can, we can double check on that, but it is a function of their their employment and their job.
The question about ammunition or just in general?
In in general, what what is allowed for for security officers to have to be your job?
Sure, that skinny boxes and what's underneath there.
Yeah, just pick somebody each meeting and just light them up, let it pop.
So you'll check into, Craig, you'll check into that. All right. Any other questions?
All right. So Craig's going to get the answers to those questions on the equipment allowance. So the, we have a motion by Andy, seconded by Genie to approve the agreement with the. The school security officers is. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All yes. And please report back at our next meeting with the answer to the equipment. To the equipment allowance. Thank you. All right, moving on to discussion items, COVID nine A is, first item is COVID nineteen.
So that was around proclamation and letter. And I've already received the direction to double check with Mr. Mumford on that.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the next thing. Okay, thank you. Bond refinancing.
Okay, Andy, stay awake on this one now.
Try, I'll do what I can.
So Director Rayner asked the question of me when he saw an article about the Seala School District being refinanced. And so I reached out to our bond underwriter, David Davidson. So I have given you two things, I think. The easier one is appendix A, which shows the debt service of those bonds. It's a nineteen and a half year bond payout. And you'll see the the coupon rate is between three and four and then some are actually at five percent. What's interesting is the bond that was passed was for 69.3 million. But yet our payoff, the principal that we're paying is 60,485. And so, but that difference is a premium. And just briefly as I can, I'm not going to get too much in the weeds because this is a very regulated. Market municipal bonds, but. The best example maybe is that, as you can see, the the interest rates have just dramatically kept dropping, lowering. And when we, when the bonds were issued, the interest rate was fairly low. But yet the coupon rate for the investor is going to get five percent on some of these bonds. And so the investor said, hey, I'll give you more than the principal is the best way to explain that. So if the band was selling for a thousand dollars, I'll give you, you know, 1100 or, you know, whatever the number is. To come up with a premium because the interest rates that they're actually going to be earning are more favorable. At that time. So so that's the difference between the 69.3 and the 60,485. The bonds are callable, meaning that they can't be. Recharged or we sold basically until June of 2027. And as it's, as he says on his handout, they can be refunded 90 days before the par date. We could refinance the bonds now, but it would be a taxable. A transaction as opposed to a non-taxable transaction. I'm not sure what the real ramifications of that are, other than, as you can see here, it'd be more advantageous. To wait until the par date to see if the interest rates are still low. And then we refinance the rates in the tax code with with the benefit of of a lower. Bond of debt servicing of those, refinance bonds, just the remaining portion, of course. So just the bottom line is we're early, right? And that, again, Matt and I, we're on a Zoom, all of these guys, and. They keep track of, you know, multiple districts with with their bonds and. And this is just an estimate. But in March of 2027, certainly sometime before that, we can keep track of that and they'll make a recommendation to us to. Hopefully to refinance the bonds at that point, but the interest rate will still be staying low. So that's it in the next shot, does that make sense? So we'll keep track of this, it'll be on radar. Nothing really to do right now. But thanks for the question.
Saving seven million dollars in five years would be nice, yeah. Okay, and thank you very much for that invitation. The next item is the first reading of public records.
Yeah, it was actually listed as a discussion item before we put it on the action item for first reading. So the purpose of that was just to get a set of eyes on it before we recommended it for first reading.
Okay.
From the board. Part of this discussion, of course, well, I I would say embedded within this this discussion. His idea of if you want to name me as the public records officer, or if you feel like we need to hire a clerk for that work. Craig and Craig and I and our office assistants do a bulk of that work. So, yeah, this is just purely for the draft form and then if there's any feedback, I will work with Ms. Mr. Mumford on correcting that, so.
You had said earlier, Matt, that you're spending quite a bit of your time handling public records, but not earlier, but in previous meetings. Would it be advantageous for the district to hire a hire a clerk? That is trained in public records response and that is part of their job, you know, in addition to other duties, so that you can focus on different to the role.
Yeah. It's yes and no. We can, I can predict the records requests that we're going to see within a year typically. COVID, in fact, New York Times did an article that the uniqueness of COVID was that when schools shut down, it helped back up districts nationwide. We're seeing huge influx of public records requests. So in a typical year, usually we see record requests from Green Foundation, maybe PSC, maybe a couple vendors. So so in a given year, it's not that heavy of a specific to the past couple of years. We've seen quite a few records request. And so that's where Craig and I really got to. You know, work with our administrative assistants. Now with that also being said. My my office assistant Julie Hyatt, you know, pretty skilled in handling that. We've had to work with Mickey Jackson. So I don't, I don't know that the dollar is best then in the office. If I think in in part of the work that we try and do is to keep the box closest to the kid. And so if we can spend that on learning resources, anything like that, the kids experience, like we're talking about survey. We can make that kids' experience better, then let's do that. So I think on a given year, Craig and I can handle it. Well, we can handle that, but but if the district, I mean, not to discount that that position. But yeah, if that's the direction the district wants to go, provide more resources at the central office level. I think that. People within our office and maybe the other's office would would like. Would like more taken off their plate, so. But that's my, that's my opinion. It's not entirely necessary. It's a, it might be a wish versus.
Did Sean review this policy?
He did. He he worked on one before traffic, so he. We sent him multi patch. We also sent him the WASM model policy. The WASM model policy aired on the site of excess. He tried to pare that down. So it was really what's wrong. Like I said, the purpose of the discussion.
How does it work? It's two parts. We've got new PSV PR computers and revised PSV PR public records policy. It should be one document.
Yeah. Yeah, so the procedures will be the administrative function.
It looks like it should be one document, but it doesn't, well, you've got two listed. It doesn't read as one because we got page numbers all over the place for it. And then this is the question for Sean regarding those page fours that in the first part. Under four. II regarding to prevent excessive interference with this essential functions, the public records officer may designate. For a week to work on public records request. And I believe that's exclusively prohibited. And that was a city in Mesa, Washington state, where they said, okay, we're just going to have a clerk work eight hours a week on request. And that was shocking. That's, I mean, maybe Sean hasn't updated on that, but we want to make sure that we're not stating a policy that is directly contrary, contrary to the state law.
He was, he was wondering if we should include track changes and. Track changes sometimes get messy because it's written in the margin and then it's long.
Yeah, like so on page two, so you can see most obvious that F is off on the on the A on the draft, but then the wording behind it is gone. You can't do that. I guess I would ask for, it's not considered a first reading?
No, it's just, okay, yeah, I changed that. And so this is coming back to the next meeting, not.
Yeah, yeah.
As a discussion item.
I have one question. Maybe clarifying a title. It's on the second. Policy 4040C, maintenance of indexes. It's in the second. Public records request, first page, item C. I don't, yeah, I'm not a hundred percent. The way I I read it is that we don't have to keep documents at the district or logs of of the records request. And that they be kept individually at the schools. And I I think that's confusing. To me, because unfortunately I said, well, I shouldn't say unfortunately, I did sit through a great series of videos today on. Public records request. So I had a question on that, if you want to clarify that paragraph. Or let me know what it means.
All right. All right, so that's going to come back also as a. A discussion item at the next meeting. Our future meetings, yeah, our next regular board meeting, maybe called a special meeting. Is scheduled for January 12th and it hopefully will be at Prosser High School. Location to be determined. At Prosser High School, that's a big school, we'll find somewhere for it. Yes. Yeah, since the meetings are going so long, are, is it, would everybody be okay with starting six? Would you be okay with that? Everybody's nodding their head, so six o'clock.
Majority of the year I could.
Majority of the year you could, okay.
Be little tough certain.
Okay. Okay. All right, so, but if we do that on a regular basis, we need to change that. We would need to change that, you know. Yeah. That one we changed, our location, okay. All right, so thank you, everybody, for coming to the meeting tonight and I wish everybody a very happy new year. Everybody get a chance to sign?